Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith, the mayor of the city of Bader. It's my privilege and honor to welcome all of you to this regularly scheduled city council meeting. We're especially pleased to note that we have a goodly number of our city council representatives here. And we're anxious to engage in some important business in this meeting, which we will officially call to order at 6:01 PM. We would proceed with our roll call and invite our city clerk to conduct that for us.
Okay. Andy Wilson?
Present.
Mark Fennessen?
Present.
Joe Schei? He is...
He indicated he would be not available this evening.
Okay. Kevin Flynn?
Present.
Justin Olson?
Present.
And Ken Smith?
Present. As we'll proceed with, as is customary, we will have a prayer to initiate these proceedings. And it's my understanding that Mr. Fennessen would do the honors this evening for that and would invite those in the audience to join in that.
Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given to us and thank you for all the many blessings. And we thank you for this opportunity that we have this evening to come together with the citizens of Bader and to look into these business matters. As we think about that, we ask for wisdom and direction and leadership that you grant each of the council members here tonight. If things will go decently and in order, you'd be honored and everything we say and do. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'd now invite all to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Wilson, would you lead that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hallelujah. Fifty-one years ago, I was in the Korean waters.
Thank you for your service and you survived.
Oh, I wouldn't have to make a little comment to keep things going.
That's right, for sure. We'll proceed with the mayor's report and would begin with a comment as noted on the agenda that, and for the education of our council members, that we'll have our official exit conference at 2:30 PM on December 10th. It will be a telephone conference, so it won't be as customary in person. And it was noted that we would need to ensure that we not have a quorum of council representatives there, so if there were one or two of you who were available and willing to be present, we'd invite you to arrange that. I will, and as our city clerk will also be there for that. Any questions regarding that? It's 2:30 on the December 10th. Okay. Second, I wanted to make as a matter of public record, official acknowledgement of those city personnel who contributed to the success of that event. My sense were there were probably seventy-five to a hundred people in attendance, and I think that appropriate sentiments and concern were expressed over the tragic life of a child who lost his life in that situation and the mourning that took place amongst the residents of the city of Bader. So we're grateful to all who made that event so successful. The next item, wanted to update the council on the status of the sixty hours of community service and part of the individual whom you discussed in our last council meeting. Steps are still being processed by the court system to make his request official, and we're still awaiting documentation to that end, so we don't have much more to report than that. I did want to also note that our new public works employee reported a week or so ago that he noted that there had been some evidence of trespassing at our waste treatment facility. And we've noted the evidence that has been provided and we're initiating some minor but inexpensive security measures to see if we can diminish that. It appears that they were young people, children, not adults, but no damage of any sort took place, just...
They just broke in for a swim, right?
Well, we hope not. There was some ice on the ponds, which obviously posed some potential risk, but we're just watchful and mindful of the need that we have to be, because of the risk hazard and insurance coverage we've got, we're gonna, we'll keep you advised on that. That, I believe, represents the totality of the mayor's report, so if there are no questions on the part of the council, we'll proceed with the agenda, the agenda approval portion, so I'd wait council action on that.
Put a motion that we approve the agenda as written for 12-4-14.
Okay, you've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve the agenda as noted, although do we have a second for that?
I have a second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Wilson. I should note that I don't have any specific changes, although we'd like, wait, you have a new agenda.
Right. We put you up. That's the one I approved.
Excellent. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, let's deal with the approval of the official minutes from our budget workshop and the city council meeting of November 13th.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for November 13th, 2014, for the city council meeting.
Okay, Mr. Olson has submitted a motion to approve those minutes of those two meetings as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Fennessen. All in, yes, question?
Can we please include the workshop minutes?
I thought I heard both.
Oh, he said city council meeting.
Okay, excellent.
And that would include the budget workshop.
Okay. Thank you for catching that, appreciate it. Do we have a second for that? Make a motion. Likewise, Mr. Fennessen. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now voucher approval.
I'll make a motion, we approve the end of November 2014 vouchers for $77,324.37 plus first of November, $136,596.54. And the November 2014 voucher total of $2,113,920.91.
Be $213,000. $213,000.
Oh, $213,920.91.
Thank you. Okay. Heard the motion submitted to the council by Mr. Wilson. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Okay, we're at a point where we're ready for public comment.
Shall we make it clear that this is public comment not pertaining to the public hearing yet?
Yes.
So I have one person that, was this pertaining to the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
What do I say?
Say hi?
Write your name.
My name is Linda Smith. I live at 719 A Street. We have a light on the corner of A Street and Eighth, and it keeps going on and off all night long. It, I don't know if you guys know about it, if there's something wrong with it, but it keeps people awake. It goes off periodically every night, so...
Have you had occasion to contact City Hall during the day about that?
No, I've been so busy.
Oh dear. Okay, well duly noted.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Ms. Carol.
There's also a light right by the telephone company that keeps going off and on and off and on. Then there's several more in the city of my tours. And I think that the PUD should be notified because these, some of these lights are for emergency. When this one goes off by the post office, it just darkens the church and everything off.
I agree.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Yes.
Every time a street light is, if we're informed at City Hall that there's a street light going out, we notify the PUD and they don't come out until they have enough complaints in enough different locations to where they will come out, and it's worth spending the time to come out here. They won't come out for one or two lights. They wait until we've complained about a number of lights, and then they'll come out and do them all at once. I don't know what that number is, but that's what they've explained to me, is that we don't respond right away, it takes a while. So the more complaints we have, the more I can turn in, and the sooner our list will fill up, and hopefully the sooner they will come.
That's very good to know.
Can I add to this?
Well, I understand what you're saying, but number one, being in the office as long as I have, and you told me the same thing, it must have changed, because when Mr. Cage was here, I'd call him, period. The truck could be out this way, that all they got is the boom truck, and they're going right through town. Whoop, put the light or new sensor on it, and that's it. It's also an emergency for them. I believe something should be done with the Department of PUD.
Excuse me. I should advise the public that this is a city council meeting, this isn't interchange at this moment in time. But we had a comment from the original presenter.
Yes, what do we have to do? Do we have to stay up all night to find out what lights do this? No, I'm serious.
Uh-huh. No, I think your concerns are valid. I'd encourage anybody that we perhaps can notify our residents that if they observe lights, to please contact City Hall, or do as you did, let us know. And if it's a problem, we will contact PUD and I'll see if we can exercise some influence on them to be more responsive, particularly if it's in a location.
You have a couple over your way. They're over in that area that I see when I'm driving around, off and on, off and on.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you. All right, with that, no other public comment?
That's it.
Okay. Very good. Then let's proceed with our unfinished business portion of the agenda. We're pleased to have with us Mr. Jeff Cummins, who provides our garbage service, and I understand you have a discussion later to contract proposal for 2015. We'd invite you to take the stand.
Oh, it's nine, time now.
Yeah. Your time is up.
Yeah, this is getting close to the end of this term, and I wanted to give their opportunity for preparing the next offering, but my proposal would be same contract, just updated. There's a couple clauses that are not effective anymore because they're completed, we did that tax payoff. And I'm concerned about unpaid bills, how to better deal with that, and I think some input would help. Plus, my son, there's several cans with, they don't have cans or lids on them, and the water gets in there and causes trouble. There's, the crows get in and spread the garbage around, and I think lids are imperative. They, we can't continue to have a clean town without everybody participating. And I did want to introduce my son, he's helping me out significantly.
Welcome.
He grew up in the garbage drop. Twenty years, and he's only 27. So he's, seemed like he didn't need any training.
Good rich.
But I wanted to maybe introduce the idea of a three-year contract, doing the same format, same, basically the same rate with a, if need be, arise during due to expenses, we can review it on January, the next two Januaries. And the next meeting, we could have a contract ready to vote on or agree on.
Okay. Any questions on the part of the council?
I've been involved with the garbage for some time, many years of sitting here in this chair, and I couldn't find anybody better than Jeff's garbage. And in my terms of mayor, I couldn't find anybody that was giving us a better rate for our citizens. It's not his fault, it's the city's fault back then. Why we have these different people with garbage bags and garbage bags sitting on their porch because he doesn't have any control. We used to have a control when we were collecting the garbage, I mean, the billing. But Jeff took over the billing because the city didn't want to do it. And my own personal opinion for all the citizens of Bader who voted me in to talk for him, I want to stay with Jeff Cummins garbage, period. I made my point.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Well, customarily, you would convey your contract proposal to me, and we would analyze it, then run it by our city attorney for their polishing, which you know they're good at. And if the council's not opposed to that, I would invite Mr. Cummins to convey that document to me, and we'll proceed to that end and see if we can have it ready for council action at our next meeting. Are you okay with that?
Well, I always looked forward to some sort of a work party, we could discuss the issues being unpaid, how to deal with unpaid bills, if I should just quit picking them up or take some kind of measures, I don't, I'm not sure what to do, but, but on the other hand, there are, you know, everybody's got their financial woes, and because I'm not as good a bill collector as I am a garbage collector, that goes undone, and people take advantage of me. But when I have left a can occasionally from, you know, after I've figured out which one is not, is the bill that's not being paid, it's like the next week, I get a telephone call, can I pay half of that right now? Or if I give you a check, can you come pick up the garbage? Or they let me know that they want to get straight, and I just want people to be upfront and honest with me, if they're gonna pay the bill, I'm, I'll pick up the garbage. And so a lot of it is communication, it's just, I don't have phone numbers for everybody, and it's, it's a dilemma, part of doing the business. We have a question.
Yes, I do think that that, as well said, it is part of having a private contract with the community. The community hires you to conduct that service, and so...
I'm good with responsible, I don't need to...
Yeah. Now, we have a comment, members of the council, do you want to entertain comments from the body? Okay, go ahead.
Judy Costello, 709 A Street. I am like Andy, Jeff's services are excellent. His son is a very, very polite young man, everything. But my renters that just left stiffed Jeff for $50.
No, I'm more than that.
More than that, okay, but more than that. That's a problem. That is a big prob, I mean, they stiffed me too, but you know, that's my house. But I think it's really, really wrong that Jeff is taking to the cleaners on this, and on the other hand, we can't have this stuff stacked up on the porches. And I don't know what the answer is, but as a community, we need to try to figure this out so that Jeff can make a living like everybody else, and my renters will pay him, and I don't get stuck with it. It's not my garbage, I have my own, I have my own garbage. So I, I just want to voice that, as a community person, I feel for Jeff, and I think we ought to try to figure out how to make this, I don't know what the answer is, but people stiffing him is not the answer.
Well, I know, a lot of it is my fault, I let the bill go on for two, four, six, eight months or longer, and, but if I had a plan, I could stick to it and go with it. And now that I'm not so actively involved in the pickup part, I want to be more of a account manager, make contact with the customers, and see where they're at, see if they have intentions of paying or not, and then go from there on a case by case. And, but I want the city's permission to leave the cans that are not being paid for after at least three, four weeks, or at most.
Well, obviously, it would be an issue that we'd need to entertain, ideas are easy to propose.
I have been doing it, and I, but I don't know if I have the authorization, and it hasn't been uniform or very consistent.
Okay, do you have a comment?
There, I have a lot of input on this topic, but I'm not sure that this is the appropriate time and place to discuss this, but there's some things that we as a city can do, and some things that we have done, and some things that we can't do, that kind of falls back on the contractor, so, but we can definitely work together, but I, I, there's a lot that we've talked about and done in the past that is or isn't happening, and I think we need to probably, probably the couple of us together can figure some of those things out if we can do it together.
A bigger deposit, or a deposit at all, or paying in advance, those things that really help. Well, so we have some outside perspective, would you care to provide some insight?
Well, I just had a question for you.
What's that?
My name's Kathy Reed, I'm from Department of Commerce, and I don't know a lot about garbage collection, but I'm wondering if you have any policies that are established policies for your billing and that sort of thing, that you share with the customers? Because I know cities, for their water bills or their sewer bills, they have certain policies about late payments and what the penalties are, that sort of thing. I'm wondering if you were to just develop some basic policies and then share that with your customers, then at least you're all starting out with the same understanding of what's expected of them and what they can expect from you if they don't, if they don't do that.
Well, it's my policy, you put out garbage, you pay.
But I mean about like, when does it become late? When do you start leaving the cans? That's the thing. Is this for everyone?
That's what, I need to get something, a standard program along those lines, that I can, that would motivate me at given time. On the other hand, some people need a couple weeks to pay, and I pretty much know who's going to pay or who's not, but I think I could get a lot better grasp if I do the legwork and keep up on my customers, doing account management is what I'm calling it.
Do you have another comment from?
Yes, my name's Bakka, and we talked about the recycle, and Joe said that maybe he could get some cans, and he's here tonight, so, you know, so far as if they got them full, that we could get him to pick them up, or, because you provide no recycle, and we understand that, because one small truck, but I don't, just there's an issue that had been brought up to these guys to try and solve.
Yeah, you need a location and some...
Cans.
Some utilities or receptacles. And we could probably move, it just depends on what it is and how it needs to be done, how often. Is that carpet or newspaper still down there at Three Quarters?
No.
It wasn't profitable for him? So you need a contract. And I don't know if this is part of the contract, just the way I collect, but I think you do want some say in that.
I mean, the policies...
This is approaching my eighth year, and it seems like every year we engage in a similar conversation, so I know that it is awkward in the extreme when...
You have two counties.
Exactly. And so I think it's probably expecting too much to have the council, just with a five-minute rendition of a contract we haven't seen, to ask them to define the specifics of the contract. I think the proposal that Mr. Cummins is submitting to you, would you consider scheduling a workshop for this? Between now and...
It's not that challenging, I guess.
Well, if you consider the fact that there's three and a half weeks left before the end of the year.
I mean, I, I could get something together concerning delinquent accounts, and just make one little paragraph for that, that I think you can either agree to or not.
If Jeff doesn't pick up the garbage, it becomes a public nuisance, right? Doesn't that come under our ordinance we have for it being a public nuisance?
Yes, indeed it does.
Yeah, one can.
Right.
But a process that takes...
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, but I just get our attention, we're more than happy to call. All you got is to raise your hand, and then we'll get to you. So what were you saying?
We have our public nuisance ordinance, and if somebody's garbage is building, that becomes a public nuisance, and then that would come under that ordinance, and we would apply that.
That's why we have...
And that would eliminate the problem we have with collecting, because that gives us all kinds of powers to clear up that public nuisance, and if they don't like it, then maybe they'll clean up their nuisance. I know some of the, some of the enforcement becomes untasteful, strange word to use, garbage, but anyhow, people don't want to imply, apply the rules and regulations that we already have in place. I don't think we need more of them, I just think we have to apply what we have, and when they, when they break the ordinance, then we apply the ordinance, and they're gonna have to pay the consequence. We give, and I think in the ordinance, we give a warning, they give 30 days to comply, bingo, then we, then the hammer comes out. And I think if we do that a couple times, people realize we mean business, and, you know, that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, and let's be clear, I've heard from two council members now on this, and we have had situations where garbage has accumulated, and we have applied and informed the residents of that problem, and they've fixed it. So to make the presumption that we aren't doing anything about it is inaccurate, so yes, Mr. Wilson.
We did have a mandatory garbage ordinance.
We still do.
We do.
We still do.
That's still in effect?
Yes.
How we go, why can't we enforce it?
I, yes, go ahead.
I can tell you why, do you want to know why?
Sure. There's the council.
Because I'm not being notified of who's not paying and who is not getting their garbage picked up. I hate to say it, but that's in our, that's in our contract that we would have, every two months, we would get a list, every billing cycle, we would get a list of who's not paying, so that we can go through that process, but it just, it hasn't been...
It's never been easy to do, and I got you one, but I, did you follow up on any of that?
The, the only one I got was at the very beginning when we wrote this contract, and you and I were trying to get our account lists together so that we had all the correct information. And by that time, it had changed, and I didn't get another one, so that's, you know, it's...
Yeah, it does fluctuate.
Right, and it does change, the beginning is hard to get going, but that, this is the kind of stuff we need to discuss, sit down and figure it out, because without the information...
If I knew this was going to fall through, I would be right on that. If I knew that's going to be followed through, I would be right on that.
It's in your contract, right there that there will be. So we just got to get the information. So in any event.
I, I would suggest that in the spirit of civility, that we address any of these misperceptions and with facts and in the light of day and perhaps with council's input. So the question, I return to the question. It sounds like you'd appreciate a workshop. And I would appreciate having a copy of the contract because obviously the city is not going to just accept hand the contract. And we, we retain the right to allow our city attorney to review it for specificity, which would need to take place before the council reviews it.
This is the existing contract.
For sure. It's been, you're suggesting there might be modifications to it. Some, however slight they might be.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, I'm not sure that a workshop at this point is really necessary. I think that if you and Jeff, and if you want to include me, that's fine, can get together and talk about, and I think you guys can probably come up with a system that will
Well, that was my suggestion at the outset.
Right. And then at that point, if, if we find that there's something that needs to be decided by council, then we could plan the workshop.
That's, that's what I meant by workshop.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gotcha. Not necessarily workshop for the council.
Some, some, yeah, somebody to balance ideas on.
Would the council approve that action? Authorize the mayor to engage in a discussion with Mr. Cummins? Yes, excellent. We can move forward. Okay, let's, let's
Set a date for that and I'm excited.
Get in touch with Jill tomorrow and we'll
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming, Jeff.
All righty, let's move to item number two. This will have, actually I have number one involving Mike Marshall and he has a presentation.
You're looking at the wrong one again.
Yes.
You can put that one with the sound and away and use that one.
Yes, I've got to just fold it in. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Mike Marshall with Gibson Olsen. And site sewer replacement project. Back in the summer, we accepted applications for replacing faulty site sewers on LMI households and renters. And we got about 40 applications at the time. But so far we've only been able to approve 29 of those.
29? Thought we were 33.
We were, there were a couple still waiting in the wings, but they didn't get everything in in time. So we got 33 that we put out in the proposal. The bid was based on 33, but there really aren't 29. Okay, so we opened bids last Wednesday. We got 11, 11 bids. The engineer's estimate was 142,727.30 including sales tax. And the bids range from 97,000, give or take 268,000. The low bid was offered by company Kenwick called Telus LLC. I've never worked with them before, but I did call six of the references that they had and their bid submitted. It checks out. Everybody said that they did good work and they'd use them again. And they're not on the SAM list as required by CDBG and L and I are revenue or okay.
Explain what SAM list means.
It's an exclusion list for doing work with federal money. I'm not sure exactly what it, do you know what that means?
It, it means they have done something bad in the past where they've done the work.
Yeah, but I'm not sure what the acronym means.
It's nothing good.
The system of award management.
Stay away, man.
If you guys write in your thing, it explains a system of award management.
So basically if you get a black spot, then you get on the list.
Yeah, you don't want to be on the list.
And they're giving a sign. They have a bid on, it was a responsive bid.
Now, will their bid be adjusted now because it's 29 versus 33 or is that going to be the price?
That's what the contract is based on. And then there's language that within the bid that says that that's the estimate. If it goes over or lower, then you're still locked into the unit prices that you submit. So in actual, that's what the award will be based on, but in actuality it should cost less because we're doing for less houses. Okay. And that's really about, about all there is for that one. In the back is the bid.
We do have a comment from a member of the public. Would the council care to entertain it, Cum?
Yes.
I just didn't understand what you said about the 29 and 33. Then you're gonna, we're gonna award a bid and if it doesn't go over or under, then we get money back? What's, what's that all about? Are you going to rebid it at 29?
No, no, it's just, that was the estimate that I put in there. When I went to bid, it looked like they were going to be 33 total. But then by the time it came now, those other four did not get the paperwork submitted.
But they bid on 33.
They bid on 33, but there's language that says even though they bid on 33, that it can change one higher or lower and they still have to go with the unit prices that they put in there. So the award will be based on
Unit prices meaning the house.
No, I, unit prices is how much per cleanup at the street? How much for a cleanup at a bend? How much per foot of four-inch PVC pipe to run back to the house?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
You ready for motion?
I've got to, I should inform the council that as I've deliberated on this whole process, which doesn't happen all that regularly for the community. Some of the feedback that I've gotten is that it's unfortunate that we have to generally, the state requires us to take the lowest bidder. Is that correct?
When you're using, when you're using public funds, you have, well, you have to take the lowest responsive, responsible bidder.
Right.
Yeah, there's those two caveats in there. They have to be responsive. They have to sign their bid. They got to submit all their bonds and the paperwork and incorporation stuff to make it responsive. And then responsible, and I called all the references and verified that, yes, indeed they are in the contract.
So is, so the only thing I'd point out in council is that it's the opinion of probable cost, that it would be about 142,000. And so here you have this entity that comes from Kenwick, which is almost $50,000 less than the expected cost of. I hope that we don't discover that we get what we pay for.
Well, that's why their references, you know, apply there. They have good, they said their references were all good and they checked them out.
And if it had, you know, it's, it's something that a local plumber could do also. It's not like we're building a treatment plant or doing some complex mechanical, you know, electrical machinery.
And would you offset some of those concerns by explaining what would happen if halfway through you discerned that they are performing inadequately or there's some contractual?
There's a, there's basically a clause in the contract that says the city may terminate for, you know, for, for cause and cause would be they're not doing a good job. They're not showing up. They're not being responsive or they're leaving messes. Any of those would be
So have the ability to monitor throughout this. So on the one hand, we need to bite our fingernails that nothing outrageously incompetent occurs. But on the other hand, we're selecting a bid that is significantly less and would ultimately create less financial burden on the residents. Yes.
You did a cost analysis on the average, right? It's an average that, that you, you put out there as a figure saying this is about where it will cost. So when you did that analysis, they came under so low, $50,000, it looked like they'd be looking at the same type of cost.
Well, the next one above that was, and I'm going from memory, I think it was like 106,000. Those Roglins, the guys who are doing the manhole coating now. So about 9,000 more. So it's not, it's not a huge spread. And with engineer's estimate, you know, I tend to be conservative too. You know, you're doing the dead winter and one of the things that, that also made me be more conservative is that when I, when I had the bid ready, I had a lot of aerial photos that showed of individual houses with where the line was. So that, you know, contractors could come and look at, you know, what kind of landscaping restoration or if there are fences or rockways in the way. And then Commerce said that, no, we can't, we can't include that in the bid because it's, it's confidential information. Who's getting the, who's LMI, who's getting the funding? So we had to pull that. So that basically throws a huge uncertainty factor into the bid. Because contractors are, you know, kind of bidding blind really. All they can go around is their experience of other typical houses, somebody's going to take to replace those side sewers, what kind of difficulties they're going to come.
Okay.
One clarification, if I understand correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when the bidding information is put out there for the contractors to look at and place their bid, they, they don't bid based on this is how much we think one house is going to cost. If I understand correctly, they're saying, the engineer's saying, we think it's going to take about this many li, feet of line and we're going to be about this many hookups and about this many that are going to have to be dug however deep or they're going with kind of a big grand total. And so then the, when the bidder, when the contractor comes in, he says, well, if I have to lay that many feet of this particular size line, I can do it for this price. And so that's where the prices vary because they're including the cost of their labor as well as the, the supplies themselves. But they're, they're not bidding like per house. They're bidding like how many feet for the whole project? What's estimated? So that's how
Clean out in each bin.
Yeah.
And if you figure out there is this bid versus a number of houses, you're still talking, whoa, we're $3,000 house. And there's more than enough money in to do the project. You know, this is not rocket science.
Well, the other thing is, you know, it's the dead winter and there are some hungry contractors out there. And this guy's obviously hungry.
Okay. All right, then one additional comment?
So it's going to be, this project is going to start construction after the first of the year, you said? And it's, and am I correct that there's going to be a round two of qualifying households next year? And so people, people will see that this is going on and other people might decide, oh, that's something I want to try and qualify for. So I think it's good to have a round two.
Yeah, that's one thing I wanted to mention. So now that you bring that up. Yeah, Sterling's going to oversee it.
Sterling is the gentleman who's from Gibson Olsen, who's been overseeing the manhole project that's been going on. And, and he's been in great communication with me and making sure that we know what's going on and keeping us up on the, you know, the ups and the downs and everything. So it sounds like he'll be also overseeing this project. Personally, I, if that helped you at all, I think that he'll do a good job keeping an eye on, on the contractor and making sure things are done properly.
All right, we're getting close.
Let me touch on this one thing that Kathy brought up. So in the revised budget that we submitted to Commerce last month? We had 225, basically a quarter million in there to do private side sewers. Okay, so this first round is, just call it 100. So you basically got 125,000 left to do round two. So after April 15th, when everybody's filed their taxes for this year, then we'll do round two to try to get as many more done with these houses we can. But there's, there's plenty of money.
Yeah, so you were right. Okay, well, that's good to know. And I did note, on the other hand, it should, with the council.
Is there any reason that we're going to, any dead winner?
It's mostly due to the schedule.
We have a time schedule? I mean, we have a time thing going on or?
We do because when we're, when we did it this summer, we were using last year's income, 2013. So we basically have to get it going this year to be able to use 2013 income. Otherwise we have to wait until next year and use this year's income. And all the people that are already submitted based on last year's income would have to redo it again.
And there were none, no?
Some may not. So yeah, so it's an income thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Rich. All righty, well then, I hope the council, I don't want to compel you to action, but
I'll make a motion that we move toward the private site sewer replacement project phase one contract to the recommended lowest responsible bidder, which is Telus LLC in the amount of $97,370.35. And authorize the mayor to enter into a contract agreement with them.
Okay, Mr. Flynn has noted to you, the motion has stated, do we have a second for that? Okay, presented by Mr. Fennessen, announce the opportunity for council to raise any additional inquiries, concerns, comments. Hearing none? All in pavers say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Okay, we're good. Thank you for that. Okay, now we'll address the issue of one B of the pay request number two of the change order regarding the manhole coating project. And I'd like to do, want to provide some commentary for that.
This is the second, the second pay estimate for Roglins to do the manhole coating. It's, it's pretty straightforward except that their pay request goes over the original contract amount. So technically you can't pay them more than that without executing the change order. And companion and basically.
We anticipated this because we added extra items to the scope of work after the contract.
After the contract was led, then we decided that it would be good to vacuum test the manholes after they're coated. So basically you hook up a vacuum pump, block off the inlet and outlet and make sure that yes, indeed, that you're not letting any air pass through anything. And if you're not letting air pass through, then you're obviously not letting water pass through. So all those tested manholes passed down the test. And then the other part of the change order is for a lot more time to chase down the buried manholes. There were 16 manholes that had buried covers. And there were two that were heavily damaged. The cone had been knocked off of one and then they just took two, two steel plates, put on top and then put three feet of rock. Bad and good. So, so we had to, you know, obviously dig that up to see what the problem was and then, you know, get a new cone and put that on there. So it was just a lot more work involved in that. And then the other part of that, 10 years ago, you did some, a lot of, a lot of sewer work. And that mostly on the west side and the south side by the treatment plant. And the line, the sewer line was so bad that at that time it was decided to build a new sewer line, new sanitary sewer, and then keep the old sanitary sewer for a quote unquote future storm drain line. So going through all this stuff, we determined that there's still, some people connected live sewer to that now storm drain line. They're not quoting the right manhole. As evidenced by stuff left in those manholes that are for storming. But at this point, they don't go anywhere. They don't discharge because it's plugged at the end. So next week, So next week, Roglins is going to be digging those up to put them on the right pipe. And that'd be another subsequent change order to cover that cost. And I have talked with Commerce and they're okay with spending that money as long as we have it. And with this change order here, um, there's still, there's still forty-four thousand left in that budget for that.
Thank you.
And then there's also a couple of, in the TV report, they were noting those gushers that basically water's just pouring in. So we're going after those as well. And probably it's just a side sewer that got put in onto the right way and never got hooked up anything and never capped or the cap was broken and the pipe got fractured and was just basically acting as a sump for it to run.
Yeah, obviously it's kind of discomforting to air our dirty laundry, if it's laundry, for the world to discern, but that's why we're doing this, so that we can fix these outrageous inflow of stormwater. So I think it's worth every penny, just watching the drama take place in that location. Now, council, at your meeting, if you want to entertain another comment from the public, I've got, I noted a hand, a hand or two raised.
I would say yes, it's, they're just as involved in the stuff as we are, so.
Okay, go ahead. And then Steve.
Um, just, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have a question. I have a question. In the manhole that's on, in the alley on between seven and eight, they poured a concrete base around that inspection cover. And that's all cracked already. Is that going to just continue to get worse?
It's already, just surround around the wall?
Yeah, it's surrounded, they put in there.
Okay. No, that's a warranty item, obviously, between seven and eight?
Yeah.
On Main Street Alley?
Yeah.
Techno, thanks for pointing that out.
Let's, thank you. Have we, we know any other similar situations, that please let us know. We'll be observant. Okay, council, are we ready? Well, Mike, are you through with that portion of your presentation?
I, yes.
Okay, then.
I'll make a motion. Okay, I move to approve the change order of item one in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. And, and pay request, item two to Roglins Incorporated, the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty, sixty-three cents.
Okay, you heard the motion submitted by Mr. Olson, as stated, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. Any comments, additional concerns, input? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. That's decisive action. Thank you, Mike, for compelling information and thank you for what you're doing.
I think the public ought to know that by doing all this stuff, our sewer plant won't be taxed as much.
Yes.
And so in the long run, it'll cost us less down there.
That's right.
Yeah, I hope that that registers to the residents of the community, that this is what's called progress. It's painful and it stinks.
Yep, it stinks.
And it has been a long-term, hard-fought, complicated process. And so I pay tribute to all who have made it possible. And I hope that you share those sentiments with your neighbors and that they get a sense that things that are happening in city Bader, however slow and painful in a scene, it's to the greater good for the future of this community. Go with it. Thank you. All right, now it is time for item number two, which is a public hearing relating to the two thousand and fifteen proposed final budget. So in order to make that official, I need to officially, I think, adjourn the meeting and then call to order at six fifty-five.
You don't have to adjourn.
Well, I'm going to do it. We've, it's, we will call to order a public hearing related to the two thousand and fifteen budget and would entertain comments from the public because it's a public hearing. Does the council have a particular time limit? I have to inform the council, as you're aware, that at seven thirty-five-ish, I have no option but to excuse myself. So we have forty minutes before we may miss a meeting of the party. So do we have a timeframe that the council would entertain?
Are you referring to each speaker, call each?
Well, you can set the time limit for a public hearing. You can go fifteen minutes or you could have a contingent upon the number of comments.
I think we should be able to do it fifteen minutes.
Let's go fifteen minutes, that's what I think.
Okay, then.
We can't call every citizen.
So with that, the council has allocated fifteen minutes for this public hearing, but with some flexibility, it sounds, okay. That, we will invite the members of the public to identify yourselves and would the council put time constraints on the comments from each individual? Some councils do that.
How many people do we have that want to get up and talk?
By show of hands?
Come on, you're with me here.
Fifteen minute time?
First time to get fifteen minutes, come on, let's get in.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm Judy Costello, seven oh nine A Street. I apologize, I do not have a copy of the budget, but my number one question is, will the rates on the sewer be raised in two thousand and fifteen and if so, how much?
The council care to address that question? Although...
Yeah, what was that?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, feel free. I could answer.
Is that scary?
No, we all, we know and we've approved it, so we're not, I didn't know, I can't go talk water.
It was, it was several weeks ago when we talked about it last, it was three weeks ago. And yes, yes, the rates will be increased and...
Three hours or something like that?
It was, oh, I left the thing in on my other, on my desk. This doesn't have the breakdown of the rates on it. Um, I believe it was a dollar a month, so it would be two dollars for the...
Two dollars, through six, sixty days.
Yeah, for the, each billing cycle.
It was fifty-eight to sixty, that's the amount.
Part of the reason for the raise, we have to increase so much or else we can't get approved for funding to meet the requirements that they say we have to do. So we have to increase incrementally our rates.
You know, I, I'm going to speak for everybody in the room when I say this. I realize we have to do this. You are killing us.
I'm not. It's the state telling us what we have to do.
We, we are dying in this community from our high utilities.
Yep.
I mean, you guys live here, too. We are, we are dying.
The only thing I can say right?
And running, and also, and also discouraging incoming.
Judy, I understand, I understand all that. The only thing I can say is what we're looking at as a total picture puts us between Toledo, Winlock and Bader, we're at the least amount.
I know, but I don't live in Toledo.
Now, if we had, if, I know that, but if we had, if we were able to pull in some businesses that could generate capital for us, then that can offset our costs, but we don't. So we have to deal with what we have. It's, it's a lousy hand we're dealt, but we just keep, we have, there's certain things we have to do. Does everybody like it? No. Does everybody want to pay more money? No. No, I believe in getting off the grid totally myself, but there's certain things we have to deal with to live here.
Yes, it's public comment.
With us being such a small community, are they devising the increase on this big plant that we're going to have to put in? We're a small community, the smallest treatment plant, I assume, would work at that site that we're trying to go for. So is our dollar rate that they're doing, that we have to do, stay? Are they considering that we're a small community and that our treatment, you know, that we're going to have to match or whatever's going on?
Can I answer this one?
Oh, please, yes, go ahead.
I'll just tell you that I've, I've been around this stuff for most of my life, I've been in the industry and I've seen what we've, the hand we've been dealt and I don't like it. Uh, I can't say some things in a public meeting, if you want to talk to me privately afterwards, I can tell you some things. But we are, we were stuck with choices and we leaned towards the least expensive possible solution there is. To accept what was being presented would have killed the city and that's why we fought it. And I think we've got the best of both worlds going and there's ways we can do it and we're asking, we've asked the engineers for the grace and we've asked the city for the grace, or not the city, but the government for the grace to let us phase it in. And they're still toying with that idea because if we can phase it in and meet requirements and we might not have to do all the big stuff. We also talked with them about repairing one of the lagoons instead of replacing it and they're considering those facts because that can be done. So all that stuff saves us money. We cannot eliminate it, which I would prefer to do, but we can't, we cannot eliminate it. So we have right now the least possible expense that we can face. We can't afford a system like Winlock did, we can't afford a system like Toledo did. We don't need, we don't need either. And I, personally, they didn't need it either, but that's the systems they went with. We have looked at other systems and I think we have probably the best of both worlds. And hopefully in the long run, you'll see that there's going to be some major savings. Even though it's costing us more, there will be major savings over what was originally presented. That's all I can say publicly.
Yes, Kathy, please.
Yeah, Kathy, Department of Commerce, and I've been working with the council, I'm the city for many years on the wastewater system upgrades. I just want to make one clarification that, um, the state does not require you to have rates of any amount, they don't require you to raise them or not. I think...
That's right.
Just to clarify something that you were saying, Kevin, that there's limited grant funding available for sewer projects in order, so for the programs that have that funding, they're looking at the communities with the highest need for that grant funding as opposed to loan funding. So they look at what, if you're going to build the project and you were to take a loan for it, what would that do to your rates? And they compare what your rates would be to what your household income is. And so it's true that if your rates are higher, then you have a better chance of getting some of that grant funding. But it is not true that the state makes you raise your rates.
Well, that's true, they don't make us raise them, but they won't, we won't get the grant money, we don't raise them. So, you know, I can twist the screws so hard and pretty soon you're going to bend and say, okay, okay, I'll raise it, give me some more money. But we can't say that, we can't do that. It's just, it's a process and you have to work through it and you have to be amicable through the whole process and if you make enemies, you get nothing. So it's, you have to work with them and I will say this, that they have worked with us. It's, it's, it's been a two-way street. It hasn't been all been battles, it's been a lot of discussions.
Part B, part of my, I was going to say. So the project that Mr. Marshall was just mentioning, all the sewer collection systems and permits, that's funded by a hundred percent grant. So that was a, that's a community development block grant, which you have qualified for because you're a low-income community. So you actually were the recipient of, you know, some of these limited grant funds. The, and you mentioned the sewer planning work that is going on for upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. That, so there is a specific document that has to be done in a certain way to meet ecology, Department of Ecology requirements. So you look at different alternatives. So that facilities, wastewater facilities plan update that's being done right now, that was paid for with the Department of Ecology funding. You qualify for half grant, half loan on that. So, and then you also have money, once you've selected alternative, it's swatted, you'll have half grant, half loan for the design phase of whatever those improvements are. So you already are starting to incur some loan funds and I suspect that's why you're starting to increase rates. But so that's for the planning, there'll be more for design. And then when we get to construction, you know, of course, we're looking for the best deal, grant and loan, but there will be some additional loan funding on that.
I will say this, that the engineers that were selected, I enjoyed working with them because they did take into consideration our financial status and they did take some of the big systems and just threw them out and said, there's no way it would fit in our budgets. And they did look at the lesser expensive systems and I happen to, I happen to say that we agreed with the system that they finally presented because that's the one we had picked out initially. There's some other things that have to be done, but like I said in a lot, can't be said publicly right now, but it's, the system is very economical compared to what we could have gotten stuck with. And I, either way, it's a bad, it's a bad deal. It's a lot of money, but that's what it is.
Okay, public, public comment, let's go with public, okay?
Go ahead, Steve, by the way. Is this a question or a comment?
Well, it's a question, I mean, it's a hearing.
Hearing, for sure. I just, I just teasing you.
Stephen Floyd, Councilman. I understand, just from discussions regarding the law enforcement provided by the sheriff's office, that there are intentions of the sheriff's office to propose a higher rate for law enforcement in Bader as far as the hourly charges provided. I'm curious if that has been a part of council discussions for next year's budget or if funds have been altered to anticipate that change.
I could perhaps shed some light on that. My understanding is that we have yet to receive an official contract document from the sheriff's department, but the initial feedback I've gotten is that there, we're not to anticipate any major change. So until we get their official document, we're acting on the information they've provided us just informally.
All right.
So the figures in that budget reflect a similar level that we had last year.
All right. Okay. And the council had spoken briefly earlier about a need to set aside funds to pursue a city name change. I'm curious if anything had, had transpired from, from those efforts.
I could provide insight on that, too, if you would like. Yeah, it was discussed a couple of times by the council and no definite funds have been allocated for that, but we did discover in the research process that it would be considerably less than what we had anticipated. And the actual costs that we could discern would be those that would require to put it on the ballot, which would be, ultimately, the residents of Bader would decide that topic. And it would cost about seven hundred and fifty dollars to do that. There are no other state fees, which in the past have been some mythical urban legend that have been percolated throughout the community, but that's not real, it's not based in fact. But there would be costs associated with stationary, letterhead changes and such things.
Lights, dropping.
Yeah, things like that. But the council concluded that it would probably cost a couple of thousand dollars, give or take some amount for that. And the council concluded that if it ever did reach that point of going before the voters, which it did, I think about ten years ago, that there would be funds, there's enough flexibility in the budget to cover those costs if it came to that. Because the citizens would, either council could initiate that petition or the, put it on the ballot. it on the ballot just through a vote, or a petition could emerge from the residents, in which case the council would have no option but to allocate those funds. Does that make sense? So that's where we stand on that.
And this one, last question. At the beginning of the year, it was determined that there was a significant surplus in the general fund that had carried over, and there were a number of different projects discussed as far as where that was going to go. And by my last recollection, there were some real estate acquisitions on the table that the council were considering. But I'm curious, with the budget that's before the council, are those surplus funds still expected to be available as they were this year? They haven't been put in any other particular funds for 2015?
I could respond to that, if the council would like. Yes, there are funds that are not specifically earmarked for that, but would come from the general revenue excess that's there. But all of that land acquisition is subject to amended capital facilities and update plan, which we're in the process of working on. Until that's done, and it's imminent, too. So when that's done, then the council can decide if they want to actually go forward with that.
And the one property, we had funds that were given to us specifically for that purpose.
Yeah, we have $10,000 from that grant funding.
From railroad?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Costello, 709 A Street. Everybody knows where he lives, so I'm going to quit saying that. But during your budget meeting this year, for next year, gave mayor and council the most heartburn, and what did you allocate funding for that you are, shall I say, pleased about?
The most heartburn was raising anybody's rates for anything. That gave us the most heartburn, because nobody wants it. And it's been, we've had, I don't know how many meetings with engineers personally, trying to get the best deal we possibly could under the circumstances. I would say that we spent more time on that than on anything.
Part B?
Part B. I'm happy we're going to get a contract with the sheriff again coming up. I really am. I am happy with the service presented, and I'm happy with their response time. Even though we considered a part-time deal, not a full-time deal, we have better coverage than we've had in, I've lived here eight years now, and it's the best coverage I've seen in eight years.
Thank you.
I'd love to add, too, that the overarching takeaway from this budget is that the city of Vader's budget is balanced. And even though percentage-wise, we don't operate with a huge budget, statistically speaking, I think that we probably have a greater surplus than the other neighboring communities. And it's only there because we have extraordinarily inexpensive legal fees, law enforcement fees, and employee benefit salary packages. You put those three things together, it's the only reason why we're in that situation. And I'm closely associated with the mayors of Toledo and Winlock, and they marvel at how the city of Vader, with as tiny a population base as we have, can do what we do with the limited resources we've got. And 2015 allocates, for the third consecutive year, increasing funding for the park improvement. It's $12,000 in this budget. And that's pretty remarkable. I mean, I wish it were more than that, but, and that doesn't include the costs, the monies that we will allocate for if we are, and the council does approve, we're going to double the size of Warden Park. We're going to get this, the second half of that south side of the property. And that's, those are baby steps, but they're positive for the future of this community. And I've got to add to council representative Flynn's comment, that the system we're getting, having intimately fought this battle for seven years, and if anybody in the community believes that we're not sensitive to the costs of this system, they have not been present during the hundreds, maybe thousands of hours, we've expended in getting this alternative that we have. It's one, it's going to be half the cost of Toledo's. Now, our population is almost identical to Toledo, and it's probably one-fifth the cost of Winlock's. And those people are dying, literally. They may be already dead, but we're going to be hurting, but we're not going to be dead. And this system that we're getting is the cheapest, and we've worked so closely with the Department of Ecology, for them to allow us to even continue with our sewers, the three-lagoon system. They didn't want that at the start, but they understand our efforts to be economical for the residents of Vader. And they have bent over backwards to support us in this. And we have squeezed blood out of a turnip with the engineers involved. We have blew away out there for a year and a half for nothing, in an effort to see if we could get that system for $90,000. But be that as it may, the reality is that we're getting a system that is inexpensive in the world of sewer systems, but it's going to allow us to have 1,260 residents, homes in this community. Right now, we're good for, what, 125 or 200, or the ERUs? That's a five-times increase in our population for an extremely economical system that actually gets us out of polluting the Olaqua and allowing us access to the cowlets, which would inevitably, eventually, if the residents of Enchanted Valley were interested in joining the system for an economy of scale, could reduce our rates significantly. So we think it's a visionary thing. It's futuristic, and it's going to allow, as Kevin was indicating, potential economic growth. We, we know that we're just a spark away from one business emerging in this community. And this system that we're, has been approved, could be just the ticket. And wait until you hear the results from the audit on December 10th, because we are posturing, positioning ourselves to get our water system back, in which time we'll be able to add that as part of our community's infrastructure. But wait after the December 10th to discern what the outcome of the audit was. But we'll talk more about that after December 10th.
And to get the water system back, there's also-
Yep.
-a very strong net worth for this city, because the county, just like us, has to put a reserve. And there had been developing reserve. And so when they turn that system back to us, that reserve comes to us, which then may, gives the city strength. So there's a lot of things that happen positively.
Yes.
You don't hear about it through the rumblings in town, because they're not involved in all the little meetings.
In these budgets, we're, we're over, I put as our reserve in our sewer funding.
110 right now.
We have $110,000 we've accumulated over the last three years or so. I mean, that's no insignificant accomplishment for this community. Same with the water system. We're going to get that back with all the reserve funds.
And when we get it back, there's a possibility we could have increased capacity, because they're going to, they're supposed to put another tank up on the hill, which would raise my water pressure to 40 pounds.
If the residents were aware of all of this, if they'd come to these meetings, they'd be less disgruntled. But we have plenty of pot shooters and complainers, but that's typical in most communities. They're just not aware that it's really happening. So I have to put that out there as a matter of public practice. Yes, Mr.?
I'd like to say something. Don't get me wrong, I'm going to say in a few minutes. I'm the oldest person sitting here today and been here longer than any one of you, period. I've seen this sewer problem every since I, the 30 years I've sat here. I've seen us have a sewer problem. We've been fighting the Department of Ecology for a new sewer lagoon for a year. We do need some finances. I don't know where we're going to get it, but I hate to see that we have to increase rates. We have to increase rates to make your outfit look good as a city people, because this is what gives us loans and grants. And I don't like this, to raise the rates. I really don't. But I do know, with all the years I've been around here, the sewer has been one of our main problems. Since I've been in office for the 30 years, and since I've lived in the city of Vader for over 50-some years, we need the money. We don't have business structure to get a business tax. When you don't have the business tax, I've never seen so many homes in the city of Vader for rent or for sale since I've been here. Thank you.
All right. Yes, time.
Can I make a public comment to my ad?
I just, it was passed a note by a member of the council indicating we're well past our time reserve, but would the council entertain the-
Sure.
Make some comments.
I want to thank the council for all their support all these years, and have done really good at working to increase salaries and hours and things here in City Hall. And I have to say that I am pleased with where I'm at right now with my salary, and I don't want to come across that I'm not, because I think I am paid much closer to what the going rate is than anybody here. But I do want to make another plea for especially our deputy clerk, Diane Floyd, and John Flat, who is the Public Works employee, because they are still severely underpaid for the type of work that they do. And I think Diane's daughter is the manager of a shoe store up in town, and their starting wage for salespeople there is almost $3 more than what Diane makes an hour. And for the type of work that she does for this city, and how hard she works, and how good of a job she does, and the honesty and the integrity of the work that's being done, I think that I don't, it just makes me sad that she has to look at that and go, "I could be selling tennis shoes and be making more than help in this little city." She loves this city, and she wants to be here to help everybody out. But I just hope that you guys would think about that a little bit. And there's no, the only increase in the budget, and you guys are aware of that, is to add some monies for, for Jonathan, for his medical coverage, to allow him some money towards his medical coverage. That's the only increase that, that is in this. And again, Diane doesn't have any medical, dental, health coverage at all, that she's a part-time employee. But in any event, I just wanted to lay that out there, do my plea for my people.
Okay. Thank you. Well said. All right. Well, council, have any other desire to extend the public hearing?
Nope.
If not, then officially adjourn the public hearing related to the 2015 budget final budget at 7:24 PM. With that, we'll proceed with item number three. It should be rather perfunctory. Council will consider resolution 12-2014, surplus of police vehicle, which you authorized, I think, a couple of council meetings ago.
I'm going to have some fun with this.
Are you?
Yep. Page two, second, second sentence. It's not a Ford, it's a Chrysler.
I, yes, I know.
I just had, I just had to give you a hard time.
It's everywhere else, right there in the title. Yes.
I got that, too, the first thing.
I'd like to make a motion, move to adopt resolution 12-2014 pertaining to disposal of $2,000 charge of police vehicle, which is deemed to be surplus to the city of Vader, and instruct them to sell, trade, or transfer title of said vehicle in a manner which, in his opinion, will be to the most financial benefit to the city.
Okay. We've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Penison. Any additional commentary from the council prior to official vote? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Item four, a quick update on the hiring of the hearings examiner and city planner. We've got the advertising. It's currently being publicized, and we're awaiting any responses from that. And we, the deadline on that is-
I believe it's December 10th.
I think we were right close to-
17?
17.
I thought somebody said 17.
We're right there, so we, our next council meeting, I don't know if we'll have any official results to report.
We're hoping we'll have something ready at the first council meeting in January.
Yes, that's our objective. So any questions on that? Let's proceed with new business. We've already conducted item number one. Last item on our new business is to consider ordinance 2014-21, the 2014 budget amendment. You should have a copy of that.
Well, to discuss this, we've got to do a motion, so let's get it going, and then we can discuss it. I move to adopt ordinance 2014-21, amending the 2014 Vader city budget by increasing the expenditures of the current fund in the amount of $45,000, and of the sewer fund in the amount of $600,000, and directing the city clerk treasurer to effect the budget as directed.
Okay. Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn, and noted, do we have a second?
I second.
Excluded by Mr. Watson. Now is council's opportunity to discuss the particular business, it is a confirmation, relatively straightforward.
It is, and I, I think, as we mentioned earlier, it should be noted here that there is a funds roll for the city parks of $4,500, park improvements for Warden Park of $5,000. So there's a lot of, a lot of extra money going to parks this year.
Additional comment?
Well, I'll make another note. Even with all the extra money being spent, there's still $18,000 not being spent that we can hold aside for matching grants. So that gives us some flexibility.
Then we will act on your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion's carried. And that's a decisive action. Thank you for that. I note that there are no other items on our agenda, so we have a comment.
Can I ask a quick question? I just want, I would love some feedback from council, if these agenda bills are helpful to you, or if they're not clear enough, or just when you get a chance.
I like them, because they are able to sit down and go through everything, and spend some time this afternoon reading it. And it just made it a lot easier for me to go through it.
Are they clear?
Are they clear?
I like it.
Okay.
Positive feedback. We like that. All right, then with that, having been decided, we'll-